I'm going to call to order the Norco City Council meeting, our Fee Study Workshop, at 4:03 PM. The Clerk will take the role, please.
Councilmembers Newton, Hoffman, Bash, Mayor Protemhanna, Mayor Grunmeyer, all present.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Bash.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on the agenda for today, we have one City Council business item. Just as a reminder, the order of presentation for the discussion item is as follows. We will have a staff report slash presentation. Council will then have their questions of staff. We will have public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. And then we will have council discussion, action, and direction. So our single agenda item for this afternoon is the discussion of the fee study and proposed recreation fees. And that will be with Gina.
Thank you very much. And this is the second study session for the fee study that was conducted over this last six months by Eric Johnson and city staff. And what I'd like to do first, and Cheryl is passing it out at this moment, is to briefly recap the changes we made last time we met on the fee schedule. And what I've done is I've taken the summary and highlighted in yellow the changes. And I'll briefly go through this, and Steve may have a comment on one or two of them, just to clarify the changes. So we'll go to page two. And the first item is a temporary special event sign review. And it basically says, "clarify" on that one. And what we're going to do is be more specific in the description. So there's actually one part of it, which is an individual can apply, in one application is allowed three events for the $75 proposed fee. Also, as a part of that, the temporary sign for special events is a 30-day permit. And that can be broken up throughout the year. It can be 30 individual days, I believe, as well as one 30-day period. And then in terms of special events, you can have a sign renewal auxiliary permit, which is a six-month renewal. So that detail is going to be clarified in the staff report when we propose this $75 change. Is there anything else you want to add, Steve?
Nope, that explains it.
Okay. And then the second item, you see additional large animal units. We are proposing no increase on that. That's removed, as well as the revenue associated with that. It has been removed. And I believe we're also going to remove the term "large" from that.
Yeah, additional animal.
Animal permits, animal units. On page three...
So I have a question on that. So are we still, Andy, going to be reviewing, talking about the one-day temporary animal thing in the near future? In other words, somebody's a trainer, and they bring a horse for one day, and then they leave. Right now, the way the code reads, or if they're training a dog, and the dog leaves, we're asking them to pay for an additional unit, even though the dog really isn't staying there, and sometimes only there for an hour once a week?
Yeah, we'll bring that back to the City Council, again. Back to the City Council, the issue is not really whether they are paying for additional animal unit versus... The issue is whether they should have a business license to operate the... engage in that type of activity.
Yeah, I think they should have a business license. It's just the money for the additional units. But we'll discuss that later. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to miss something. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment on that, or ask a question. How are you going to keep up with it?
In terms of...
Are you going to go... You're going to go over there and big brother them and tell them you want to see their books to see who they're... How many they're training today, or how many they trained yesterday?
No, no, what's happened, what brought this to light is that a... There was somebody who was training dogs, and they would... People would come over for an hour and a half. A neighbor got mad at them. And the guy didn't have a business license, but they want him to pay for an additional 12 dogs, or whatever it is, to pay for each dog, even though he has already got his four dogs. So it would be over and above the four. They would have to pay quite a large fee for those 12 dogs in order to stay in business. And I think that's what we need to look at. I don't agree that we should be charging that fee just for somebody going on and off the property.
Yeah. I think we've always interpreted essentially those as visitors, that it's dogs that are permanently residing at the site, as opposed to...
Well, if that's what we're doing, but now they're saying no, because we have a situation...
Yeah, well, the distinction...
I mean, I'm with you, Berwin. I'm with you.
This is going to be an item for discussion later. It's not with this.
Right, okay.
But the distinction is a business versus people coming over that have animals with them for the day, for no other purpose than just to visit. And that's what we've got to make the distinction.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
That's going to make for a good discussion about your arguments. Thank you.
And Steve, and I know, Gina, you said you're going to remove the large animal. And now we're talking about dogs. So with the large... With the dogs, anything over four, he requires you to have a kennel permit. So is this going to substitute for a kennel permit? Because he's talking about dogs. Are we going to leave large animal in there? Because that's the difference.
What's being proposed right now with the fees is that for each animal, not just horses, but dogs, each animal over your permitted number of animals would require a CUP, and the fee is going to be, I think it's $79 per animal. So if you're going over with two dogs, you need 79 per dog.
So, but you would also need a kennel permit?
And that's with animal control.
Making it complicated, really.
Yeah, it... Anything over that is considered a kennel, and can only be in a certain zone, so it would require a conditional use permit. They would have to get a CUP.
Correct, and I understand. But I'm trying to keep it simple. We had it simple with large animals, and now we're making it complicated. If one guy wanted an extra horse permit, and now we're throwing dogs on top of that, we're totally different critter, for the lack of a better term. And now we're putting this in there. Why aren't we trying to keep it simple? You got an extra large animal requires you to have an additional fee. We review it. If you want to have more than four dogs, you need to have the review of animal control and a CUP with a kennel permit.
Okay, but...
So I'm just trying to... I mean, we're going to remove large, and that's why I want to know why.
Well, because a kennel permit isn't a public hearing, and that's not a conditional use permit. That's a permit through animal control that's granted based upon their own internal reviews, and that's not a public hearing process. A conditional use permit is a public hearing process.
There is no kennel permit.
Okay.
Animal Control does not issue kennel permits. The code says, over four dogs, your constitutes a kennel. And you can only be in a certain zoned area. To do anything beyond that would require a conditional use permit. Animal Control does not issue kennel permits.
Okay. Just trying to keep it simple. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to page three. We are renaming PACA creation and relocation to PACA relocation. No other change there. And regarding the one-day ABC license, nonprofits will... A fee will be waived for nonprofits. And then on fire prevention plan check inspection, we removed the pound sign that was there. And these are the only changes. And I understand we're going to move forward in the future on other items. But in terms of adoption for May 15th, you'll see these changes in the staff report. We most likely won't go ahead and give you a whole brand-new PDF of the book. We'll just identify the changes in the staff report. And now, if there isn't any other questions on the last study session, we'll move on to the recreation fee study. And I'll have Eric come forward. He has a PowerPoint presentation for you, that he's only going to use as a reference to the conversation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Mayor. For the council, I'm Eric Johnson from Revenue Cost Specialist. It's good to be in front of you again here this afternoon. So we're going to look at things a little differently than we did with everything else, because recreation fees are different than everything else. We can't just say, "It costs $500 to provide a youth basketball for a child." And we can't just charge that even though it costs that. There's market considerations, there's community considerations. And so what I want to talk about here today is cost recovery goals. And more specifically, cost recovery goals of direct cost. And we'll get into a little bit, as we go through here, what that means and why, I think, direct cost versus total cost. And so let me just start out with... And you can kind of also follow along on... In the book, there's a summary schedule that will match these numbers here. So after the text, there's just a matching summary schedule that will have these same numbers as we go through. And so what we have here are the direct costs for the various recreation programs. And so the note at the bottom clarifies what direct cost means. Direct costs are... The program... Direct program costs are the direct part-time salaries and benefits, and the direct supplies for that program. The direct full-time costs are the direct salaries and benefits of the full-time staff working directly on that program and any other associated expenses. So it does not include overhead. It does not include Brian's time or Michelle's time. It does not include shares of your time as part of city overhead. It also does not include facilities. We'll kind of go into those costs later. But this is just the direct cost of that program, not the associated support cost. And so as you see with... We've also kind of grouped things into some areas also. So we have kind of the program services, senior programs, recreation classes, youth programs, city-sponsored special events, broke out rentals separately, and then also broke out the event center separately, because these are kind of three distinct, different types of services. So the total of the direct cost for the various programs, $725,000. The direct cost for rentals, about $21,000. And the direct cost for the event center, about $350,000. Now, when we add in the revenues, we can see what is the direct cost recovery for these various different programs. And so as you can see, some of them are all... You know, some of them are less than 100%. Some of them are more than 100%. And remember, this is just the direct cost, not the associated support and facility cost. So the recreation programs are recovering about 80% of their direct cost. The facility rental's about 82%, and then the event center, about 65%. But we look at just the fee services within recreation as a whole, the department's recovering about 75% of its direct cost. Now, when we add in some of these indirect costs, these costs exist, they're important costs, the cost recovery goes down. So we see down at the bottom there, we've added in facility maintenance and staffing, about $340,000. So of course, now our cost recovery's gone down to about 58%. When we add in the city overhead cost and the department overhead cost, it's about another $400,000. And of course, the cost recovery goes down to about 45%. So when we use the same model that we looked at with all the other services in planning and public works and such, the comparable is about 45% cost recovery. Now, I'm going to ask you to look at just direct costs, though, and go back to the previous slide of direct cost and direct cost recovery. And the reason I think that you should look at just direct cost is because we want to set up some cost recovery goals, and have some goals that staff can come back to you on an annual basis, or however often you would like, and show how they're filling out those cost recovery goals. If we include it as total cost, if the goal is X percent of total cost, well, that means staff has to go back and redo everything that we did as part of this process, has to recalculate the general city overhead, has to recalculate department overhead, has to interview public work staff to figure out how much... And other park staff to figure out how much time they spend on facility maintenance. And so it becomes a much larger and more cumbersome process versus direct cost. Department knows what the direct costs are. They track that. They're very good at tracking it. And so they can tell you, this is... We spend this much on part-time staff, this much time on supplies. And the cost... The end result will be the same, because if we looked at this as total cost, that 80% number would be lower. That goal would then be lower, because we want to certainly set up realistic goals. Versus, okay, we're going to do it as direct cost, and now the goal is up here, and it's because we're applying it over a smaller base. So that's the rationale behind it. And so also, today, not really getting into specific fees. We're not coming to you asking you to change fees and getting your recommendation on whether this rental fee should be higher, or this youth sports fee should be higher. It's to talk about goals, and to find out, as a council, what do you want your recreation department to recover. We can look at it in terms of, currently, the department's recovering about 75% of its fee-related program cost. That could be a goal, that the department should recover 75%. And go back, tell staff to go back and make changes to it, make adjustments to it, within some other, you know, maybe some community goals also. But that way, they can have the ability to respond on the fly that, hey, we have a more popular program here that we want to institute, and be able to put a fee in place. Or this fee isn't working, and it's... We're losing market share, so we want to be able to adjust it down, maybe, to get our market share back, to allow them to make these decisions on the fly, as long as, at the end of the day, they're fitting within your goals. You may decide that we want to look at program level, that for these list of programs at the top, it's currently 80%. We feel comfortable with that as a goal. So the goal for these programs as a whole is 80% cost recovery. Some you may make money on, some you may lose money on, as you are today. But the goal that you're asking staff to fit within is at 80%. So before I go on, I want to get some feedback from the council as to how does that sound? Because everything else is going to kind of flow from that. If it's something that... That's not the direction you'd like to go, and you'd rather get into more individual fees than... Those are two very different discussions.
Does anybody have any comments?
I have one. No matter what we do on all these recreational programs, every one of them takes a center, like the Ingalls Park or Riley Gym, the fields. They all incur a maintenance cost. If we do not include the maintenance cost in these, along with the direct cost, we are going to end up increasing our capital improvement fund so much every year, because we're not covering the costs out of the normal wear and tear of the facility. So I think we're kidding ourselves if we don't include a maintenance cost in our fees on the facilities that we use, because of the wear and tear.
We certainly can. But let's say, for instance, we included that maintenance cost in there, and...
I mean, it's... Now, we're looking at, say, we put a goal of 60%.
Right.
It's a 57, 68. I mean, 60% is a reasonable goal on that.
And so if we did that, yeah, we'd have to lower our goal, because we've increased the cost, we've increased the base. But you've also made it harder for staff to come back next year and say, "Here's how we... Here's how we fit within that goal of direct cost plus facility cost," because now it's just an extra work to generate that facility cost information. It can be done. It just makes that process more cumbersome.
See, I disagree. Because if you have good maintenance program, you eventually eliminate some of the maintenance you're doing now. In other words, you don't have the big cost factor of, wow, we've kept putting maintenance aside all the time, and we didn't include it in our recovery annually. So that... Then you end up with a major project that you have to fix. Rather than doing that, we look at it a goal to do continual maintenance on projects. That way, we don't have the big, wow, we got to spend a bunch of money because we didn't take care of it.
I guess I look at the two pieces of it as separate, that there's a maintenance process that the department's supposed to identify where there's issues and problems, and keep up on it, so that that doesn't happen. And I see that process being different than what's our cost recovery for these programs that use that field. And not that that cost doesn't exist, and isn't, like I said, isn't important, but how that... And maybe I'm wrong here, as far as how it happens here, is how that maintenance happens, or it doesn't happen, I usually don't see it as tied in or related to the fees of the people using those fields or those facilities.
Now, let me give you an example. If I own a rental company, say I rent out chairs and tables. Somewhere in that fee, am I renting out those tables and chairs? I have to have a maintenance schedule in there, because I know that some of my chairs and tables are going to get damaged. I just don't rent them out for the direct cost of those. I look at replacement cost, and I look at that. That's what I'm saying, is we have to include that in our fees. Otherwise, we're going to be caught short after a year. And that's just... That's why I say, we should be including a portion of our maintenance fees in our schedules.
So the maintenance fees, so for instance, right now, there's fees for chairs and tables, as far as... And staff should have the ability to increase that fee if they need that money to be able to buy more.
I'm just... I use that as an example. But anything we use up there, because we incur a maintenance cost to maintain the facility...
Yeah, there's no doubt.
And it's not cheap.
No, it's not.
It's not cheap to have... You go out there as part of our maintenance fees.
$340,000.
So, I mean, that's what I say. That's my opinion on trying to get a recovery, is getting our maintenance on there.
I have a question. Does that all fall on the shoulders of Parks and Recreation, that maintenance?
It's in the Parks and Recreation Department. It's, you know, there's the...
Right.
Facility Maintenance Division, which is also part of the... The event center's included in that division. It's combined together. And so most of these costs are in the 737 division.
Right, but I'm just wondering, as a general rule, does 100% of that burden, should it fall on that one department? Because it's not being used by just that one department.
In some situations, you would... Or some cities call them ID charges. So there's ID charges to different departments. It may be here, but yeah, you're right, absolutely. Unless you 737, you have a lot of costs that are associated to the fire department, police department, all that.
This building?
But it's in this budget, this city hall, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, yeah, could you... I guess you could... It relates to everybody.
I just am wondering if it should be more proportional. If that's the direction the council chooses to go, should it be more proportional so that 100% of the burden isn't falling on one department, because it's not fair?
Part of this process, we did break out within 737, for instance. The parts of 737 that were facility maintenance and other facilities allocated those costs. So those costs in 737 that were for City Hall were allocated as part of City Hall, and are part of the cost that we looked at with the fee study, and part of these costs also. And so we did that through that process. And actually, the department has a very good spreadsheet that breaks it out, most of these costs out, and certainly the staff out, to all the various different facilities, as well as the event center. So a lot of that information exists. It's just from a budgetary standpoint, it's then all put back together again.
So when it's listed in here, the $341,000, is that only like Wayne Makin, the event center? That's everybody, City Hall, everything?
That's only recreation facilities.
Only recreation?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
And that doesn't even include parks' operations, which is just general service to the community. So that's not included in there.
Okay.
So the real budget is actually 1.844...
Add everything up.
With everything.
And it's... Yeah. So it's not really the budget, because this is the fee-related services that recreation provides.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
You know, it's extraordinary what... I mean, we are a recreation-based city, and we're doing things that no other city does. And our programs are so good, that literally, one of the problems I was just made aware of today is that we're having trouble on our youth sports programs of keeping the 51%, because people want to come here and engage in this city, because we run such great programs. And I totally get, it sounds like a lot of money, but the reality is, is for what our department here does, it's extraordinary how little money goes out. I mean, if you look at Corona, and you look at some of those other places, and they have some beautiful fields, which are all paid for by taxes with the communities that are surrounding them. And so I want to applaud your department, Brian. And I know I'm biased. I sat on the Park Recreation for 10 years, so I'm biased. But it's really amazing that you've been able to do that. I do think we need to look at the fee structure for people who are coming from other communities. Now, I have a question on that, Brian. Let's say, all of a sudden, they don't want to come here anymore. They don't want to pay the $5 or $10, or whatever number you come up with. What would happen if suddenly you had a decimation of people who are no longer participating in the leagues? Now, we had that happen one year when I was on the board for Norco Girls softball. And what we did was we linked leagues, so we'd have enough games to play for the older kids. What would happen to your programs if that were to happen in softball, or...
Well, in those particular cases, or youth sports groups, then you would be traveling, or they would be traveling to you.
Which is what we did.
Because you're going to make up in communities, and you have... In one division, you have four teams, and you're going to pick up three teams here, so you can at least have a Ron Robin. Or because you're... It doesn't... It's not helpful in a league to have a bunch of buys. So you're going to do that, and that's typically what would happen. Or you would, as opposed to merging with different organizations, you would try to pick up different programs, and you share facilities and fields that way.
Yeah, which is what we did. And then the other thing is, Andy, and this is really a sincere question. Is it time for the city of Norco to have a building department? In other words, Brian has to take care of the air conditioners and the ceilings. Is it time that we have a separate department that actually does facilities? Is that something that would be feasible, save money, lose money?
Yeah, we actually do. He's just under Brian's department. We have building maintenance folks, yeah.
But you get my point. I just wonder if, you know, if he wouldn't have gray hair, if maybe he didn't. But I mean, if you think about it, that's a lot under one department to have to handle those things. Is that something that we should look at, or...
We can, but I don't see it saving money.
Okay.
Put it that way.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right. So I guess what I'm hearing, and I'll choose to hear it how I hear it, is that we're okay with the goals, as far as setting some cost recovery goals, some broad cost recovery goals, and then asking the department to fit within those goals. And so then it's just a discussion as to whether or not it's just direct cost, or it's direct and facility cost. If we do direct and facility cost, there would be a little bit more work that we would have to do to be able to, for these various different facilities and fields, allocate which groups are using them. How many hours has been used by this group? How many hours has been used by that group? So that we can split out that $341,000 to the various different programs. And of course, if that were the methodology going forward, the department would have to do that going forward also.
Let me interject on this. Brian, you have a short staff now. You know, your directors are sitting there. And I don't want to overburden them now with what we're trying to do. Is this a reasonable thing that I'm asking for, or is this reasonable to look at? We know you can get the direct cost. That's pretty simple. Is asking your staff, with the staff you have now, without increasing your staff, is that going to be a burden if we were to include the facility maintenance onto any cost fees that you'd have to track?
Yeah. I think what we would need to do, and I didn't do a little analysis on it, but the facility fee charge, whatever that would be, would be probably not pick up the full burden. It'd be a percentage. I don't know that you could recover the full burden without raising your rates to create a market problem, whether your fees go too high, and/or it becomes nonaffordable to certain levels of groups. Therefore, you would have to have some sort of a... What I think is one of the goal policies is that certain groups fall into this recovery, certain groups fall into this recovery. We do enough research on cost for recovery, replacement, et cetera. So we have a pretty good handle, I believe, on those numbers. I think where Eric would need to help us is how do we implement that to figure out what that would be? And we'd have to come back to you and say, "Here's the recovery for fee for percentage that we would get for providing the direct cost. These costs would be this, if you wanted to recover 100, or 75, or 60% of that." And I'll use an example. At Ingalls, our equipment is totally in that part of the budget. And we pick up all of the equipment depreciation, which is a $30,000... And we pick up all of the equipment depreciation, which is a thirty thousand dollar hit to that budget, just alone. That's a fixed cost, basically. So, and we have to have it in there for the replacement of that equipment down the line. The challenge is, is pushing that cost onto everyone else, when they only use a small percentage of what that equipment time would be. And that's where it becomes kind of the challenge of how do I figure what your fee would be, based on that percentage of that equipment time? Because you shouldn't pick up the whole burden for the whole year. And that's, that's, that's the challenge of looking at those type of fees. So, um-
And, and-
Could it be done? We've talked about, there's a, a formula to do it, it's just, it, it, it would take a little work to get there.
And, and as Brian mentioned, at the end of the day, what sets the fee amount is the market. What people are willing to pay for that product. And so, the, the, the cost goals are, are, are big, big goals that they need to keep, keep track of, but when they're setting that fee, they're looking at what are our competitors charging, what, what are private and public? And it, do we have the facilities to do it? Do we have the space? Do we have the staff? And a whole bunch of other things. And then, the goals are something that they would have to manage, and, and as they're going through, and say, okay, we got so much here, we got so much there, we, 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 uh, this, this program is, just doesn't fit in because it's not going to even come close to recovery. And so, it's those kinds of things that they're kind of, kind of constantly having to manage, um, and would continue to. And so, adding the facilities cost to that would, in, in a lot of ways, would, wouldn't change a whole lot, because they're still doing all of that, and now, our goal, instead of, say, seventy-five percent, is sixty percent. So, our goal is still bringing in roughly this same amount of dollars. It's just, it's just when they come back and tell you, hey, we, we, we beat our goal last year, we brought in sixty-five percent if we include facilities, or we brought in eighty percent if we don't. Um, it's that kind of feedback that they, we, we'd like for them to be able to provide to you, so that you know where your Recreation Programs are at. So, it could be done either way, um, but at the end of the day, it, it, it comes back to the same point.
Question is, I think-
It's, it's been, it's going to take a lot more work.
No, that cost tracking is there.
Yeah. It'll take more work.
I have the data, it's how do I proportionately figure out that data per each individual fee per group?
Set aside replacement cost. The cost we spend on Facility Maintenance, relative staff or supplies, we track that, so we know what those costs are.
Okay.
So, that, I think, the point Eric is trying to make here, is currently, we are saying that direct costs, we're recovering seventy-five percent. The, the City Council needs to make a decision to say, we're going to recover that seventy-five percent, maybe we need to increase, increase it to a hundred percent, to account for some of the cost of Facility Maintenance. Okay?
I, I agree with that.
That's kind of the policy you need to set.
Right. And, and, and so, and, and that's where it might be, where we say, okay, it's including these costs, and we, we take it down to sixty percent, because at, at a minimum, we know sixty percent is doable. And maybe you want to push them, and, and, and try and push them to do more, maybe we do sixty-five percent, um, but at least we know that sixty percent, they're doing that today.
And ultimately, regardless of the total costs, and what you include, the fee is market-driven.
Right.
So, you're going to, you're going to have the, have the same fee, it's just you're going to say, well, that, that fee's only recovering X amount of dollars, instead of X amount of dollars.
Right.
But it's not, but it's not going to affect the amount you're going to get, you're just going to know you're getting less.
Right. Because at the end of the day, the, what, the revenue that comes in, it's a lot to do with the, the creativity and, and, um, of the Recreation Staff, as far as, okay, here's, here's some programs we think will work, or, and, and so, it's, it's that constant fine-tuning that they're doing.
I think one of the challenges for staff is that we have, uh, for lack of better words, sponsored groups, or proportionally sponsored groups. So, to, to do that, and you're recovering seventy-five percent of all the direct cost on everything, and that includes special events, which include Horse Week and all of that. If you change that, then we have to pass that cost on, so some of those groups who are, what I want to say, are fallen under our special consideration, or, or we subsidize to some degree because of their longevity, or whatever, um, and what they provide to the community, then that may have, that may be a change there, too. So, there's a domino effect to that. So, it, it becomes a philosophical approach, can we do that? Uh, yes, we could, it, but it is, it, it may have an impact to those particular groups.
And especially at the Event Center, where you have, you know, basically, it's a public community facility that also offers private rentals, versus being a private rental facility that, by the way, offers some, um, community support. And so, and it's, it's, that's, that current focus being this community asset, this community facility, and so, that makes it harder for them, the department, to make as much money as they could, as if it were a private facility, where anybody who comes through the door is paying full freight.
Um, so, just, just practically speaking, the reality is, we're really recovering sixty percent if you add the two bottom numbers.
If, if you, if you add the direct cost plus the facility cost, you're at sixty percent. Once we add the overheads, it goes down even more.
And just some, some observations, um, in terms of the Senior Center, I, I don't know if recovering a hundred percent is the way to go, but for example, we provide services as a community to seniors because they have nowhere else to go, literally nowhere else to go. And then, the, the, the rule of thumb we used to use years ago was that, um, youth on a ball field is a youth that's not in the back of a patrol car. And so, I realize that the hundred percent sounds like a great goal, but what responsibility, as long as we can afford it, do we have to the community, to help foster the community in the short and long term? And I guess for me, I'm, I'm okay with these numbers. I mean, even our fair, we assist in that, that's the oldest all-volunteer fair in California, Aya the Cowboy. I mean, the reality is, it's, it's attended, but not as much, some years great, some, but, but it's a wonderful event. And those are things that if, if we really try to go for the hundred percent, I fear that that, the parade of lights, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do that foster community. So, I'm, I don't know about the hundred percent, I wish we could bump up to sixty percent, but at the same time, I, I like, we are a recreation-based community, and, um, so I'm okay even with the sixty percent, as long as we can afford it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, one of the things, and Kevin, you alluded to it, on the, the Event Center Services, you have to look at that as not the three hundred and sixty-five days of income possibility, you have to look at the fact that it's fifty-two weekends. That's your money, is on a weekend. Majority of the time, five days a week, that facility will not make you any money. Majority, I'm not saying, you, you can pick and choose. So, to me, looking at sixty-five percent from that facility is not bad, when you consider, you're only talking about a hundred and four days a year, the possibility of, of that facility being rented, and I know we rent for two weeks, but for the, for the ability to, to bring in income in it. So, it's not bad. Um, that's still two-thirds, that's still over two-thirds of the, uh, of a hundred percent. So, that's not bad. And the reason I bring up the maintenance, is just that we're not, so we don't cut ourselves short, because we've done that. We've cut ourselves short. If we had a program like with the ACs at Nellie Weaver, if we had a maintenance fee in there, just like we had the bleacher fee up there, where we, then we have something to replace these things. So, we're not worrying about, okay, we have to take some money out of the budget, or we have to worry about the capital improvement fund, putting that money in there. It's the same thing as Wayne making. How do we pay for these, you know, the upkeep of a field, or something that, you know, we need to get done? And that's why I was looking at the maintenance fee to be included. But if it comes to a point where it's going to be difficult for our fee users, and you guys know better than we do, because you work with it every day, is, are we going to drive the people away? I don't know. If you're telling me, Patty tells me, nope, these people aren't going to rent that, because it's going to cost them five dollars more, uh, a year, for a rental fee? I mean, I can believe, but what do we do? Uh, you're right, Brian, we have expensive equipment up there. That tractor doesn't run for free, or running two up there, we're actually running three with a Bobcat. And a water truck, it doesn't run for free, the water's not free. It's, we can cover our direct cost, we're doing that. And maybe everybody's satisfied with the, uh, the seventy-five percent recovery on direct cost. I think it's pretty good. But at the same time, we have to understand that if we're going to go, like what Kevin is saying, we are a recreational town, and we're doing events up there that bring people in the community, hopefully, that will generate more money through our TOT, and we're going to hope for that. So, I'm trying to make it, and, and, and my reason for bringing it is, I want to make it so it's not overburdensome on your staff, Brian, to how to do these cost recoveries, so that when Patty, or Michelle, or Hank goes in there, hey, we're going to rent you this facility, and it's, oh, I don't want to pay those fees. And then, we have to play, uh, uh, you know, Midas, and say, okay, what, what are you going to do to bounce it out? I don't know. So, that was my comment, is, is it overburdensome for your staff to do that? And, uh, so, but that's, that's a problem with, we have with Event, the Event Center, is, it's not op, it's, look at the sixty, sixty-four point nine percent cost, direct cost recovery, not too bad for a facility that's only operated, uh, now, even though it's busy, but you think about it, the fifty-two weeks, that's fifty-two weekends, a hundred and four days, that's actual times that we have the ability to make money on it.
If you look at those fifty-two weeks, part of those are subsidized between our local horse clubs, and our other big special events, and I'm talking primarily Fair and Horse Week. So, when you look at that, you, you're really, it's less than, quite a bit less than, yeah, it's, as Patty's whispering in my ear, forty-six weeks. So, uh, out of the hundred and four, total. So, from an industry standpoint, the recovery overall, departmentally, for direct cost is actually pretty good, considering, uh, some of the other cities, which would be probably much more subsidized, and I think Eric would probably, who does this with other cities, would say, we're not, we're not doing too bad.
Yeah, that, that is true, especially, uh, facilities without a pool, if you're doing around fifty percent, you're doing pretty good, of your direct cost. And so, with, pool drags that down, but without a pool, you're, you're doing above average.
Which tells you, if you put a public pool in, you're going to change that number.
A big hole in the ground you throw money into.
Yeah.
Start, start throwing the money in. So, then, that really is the discussion, unless we want to get into more of the discussion about, um, community groups and, and the subsidies provided to various community groups. Otherwise, I'm hearing pretty much status quo, as far as that goes, so I didn't know where the council was on, on some of those things.
I do want to add one more thing, comment to, uh, what Eric's saying. We're completing a, a, a study right now, that's an analysis of fees in comparison to a like-type facilities. What, what's really interesting, when you try to compare, let's use the, our equestrian facility, Event Center, there are very few facilities left, particularly in Southern California. They're going away as we speak. And the, the fees that we do charge, based on what we're, our analysis right now, are, uh, not in the low part, but they're probably about in the middle of the market. So, there is a little room for adjustment in there, but we're one of the only fi, facilities that, we don't have dates, that's one of our problems, we're full. And then, when you look at our, rest of our fees, when you look at youth basketball and those other particular programs, um, there are, we're, we're pretty close in the market, there is some adjustment, so when we do come back, I believe there is some adjustment. Is it going to create a huge amount of adjustment to that bottom line? No, but it will probably raise the percentage up for recovery a little bit more. The one thing, too, when you look at, if, uh, like what Ted is bringing up, is that when you do put that fee, or you have that fee, identifying that fee, and then maybe having that put aside, if that was the direction, so that that money is set there for replacement versus, it just goes back to the general fund. So, those are things that have to be thought about as well.
One final note, Brian, and then, and Eric, is this something, and I'm, I'm, I'm good with staying with the, the status quo and trying to reach our seventy-five to eighty percent goal under our cost recoveries. I'm, maybe look at this year, and Andy, you can tell me if this is going to be overburdensome. If we, since we haven't done this in a long time, is maybe look at this and bring it back in twelve months, to see how we did, as far as our maintenance, fee cost recovery, where we're at? Because for most of us, we haven't done this study. When was the last time we did this study? Five years?
Ten.
Ten, ten years? So, I don't want to go on any new ground, I don't want to chase people away, but maybe this is a year, and, and up till 2020, we look at this thing again, to see where we are on those numbers, and look at it that way, so that we get a better comparison to what we want to do in our fee schedules? I mean, it's, I'll leave that out there, and try to stay with the status quo with the, uh, I like seventy-five percent, that's for sure.
All right, so unless there's any other questions or discussion?
I have one. And part of it's, I think you're in this, Andy, um, I'm kind of looking for this magic number, okay, that is going to work. In realizing and maintaining our community goals with this, how will these fees relate to the, the big picture of the overall budget? When, when we get here in another month or so, sitting down with our budget, and go, oh crap, we're in trouble, we need to start recovering more? Or are we okay, big-picture-wise budget? Do we, do we know that? Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, I think so. Uh, so, so, with respect to this, uh, regression fees, if we leave it at status quo, we're not looking to add revenues to the budget from this. Okay? That's what it means. So, it's a status quo.
Right.
Okay? Um, with respect to the bigger list that you looked at tonight, uh, that certainly is going to generate some revenues that are not currently factored in the budget.
Okay.
Um, don't know what that amount is, two hundred and fifty thousand, perhaps?
The non-Recreation fees?
Yes. Yeah, so, that is a number we're going to pick up from now.
All right.
Uh, but again, uh, these are not numbers that, uh, will, will address all of our budget deficit.
And it's also tricky with, to say Recreation, we know that, we, we need another fifty thousand dollars out of you. We need, and it's, they can't really do that by increasing fees, because they're already working with fees that are, that meet their market. So, they, they've got to, you know, you're basically talking about adding whole new programs, and then there's, do you have the space for it, and you got to staff up for it? So, it's, it's really tricky to just be able to say, increase Recreation revenues, uh, that also still fit within your community goals for that program. Um, it, it's, it's, it's hard.
Is there a, a, a valid percentage? This is on residuals, so let's say that, you know, we're, we have this recovery percentage, okay, and, and just pick a group or an event that we give a discounted rate to, that, of the magnitude of that event, could you attribute certain revenues to, uh, buying gas, uh, restaurants, hotels, feed stores? Is there a?
There's definitely models out there. I know there's definitely models with theaters, um, I'm sure there's models, um, um, that, that do that kind of thing. Economic Development Staff could definitely help with that. Their, their estimates, of course, and they're generally pretty fuzzy numbers, but there, there's no doubt that there's a benefit when people come to town.
Well, I wouldn't want to have a, you know, a fuzzy number. I mean, is there a, a model that, you know, is that-
Fuzzy in the sense that you're, you know, you're, these models are all built in-
A number that's valid, even if it was on the lower side.
Yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, they're, they're, they're validated to some extent, but they're based on some assumptions, that X percent of people are going to buy gas, and X percent of people are going to go out to eat, and that, those kinds of assumptions. And so, you know, whenever you have assumptions, in my mind, numbers are, are fuzzy.
They know how to spell it, yeah.
Yeah, it's not bad, but it's just, it's, it's the best that you have, because you can only assume certain things, and so-
We've done some modeling like that, uh, Rogers helped us with that, and we have done it, and those, and we've done it for like the Event Center, looking at all the events, what they come in, multiple-day events, and when we changed our fee structure before, we added a, to encourage multiple-day events, we give a percentage discount. And the reason for that is, we're making that money somewhere else in town, because they're staying longer. The, and that's been a, a very good program model for us up at the Event Center. One of the, when we looked at the assumption models, uh, we, uh, we, the, the number that was high- One of the, when we looked at the assumption models, we, the number that was high obviously showed it was running in the black. But when we reduce that, say, okay, at 75, or 50, or 25%, it comes down, and the delta difference, it gets closer to a break-even point, when you look at that model. But again, that's an assumption, thinking that people are either buying this much gas or that. So, as Eric said, is it's, it's a model. It gives us some data to look at, and you can percentage it down to say, okay, well, God, I'm happy about if we recovered, if we're getting 20% of what that model could be, based on these assumptions, then that's not bad. So, we've done those sort of analyses, and it's time to probably take a relook at that again, but we have done data, look-sees on that, and again, it's based totally on assumptions. Thank you.
So, unless there's any other discussion or questions, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Does council have any other questions? Are there any cards?
No cards on this item.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for discussion, action or direction, but I think we've given staff, does staff have adequate direction from council?
So, we do.
All right. Well then, I declare this meeting adjourned.